It is 6 o'clock, Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. We are, this is a meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee of the National Board of Education, and we're holding it by the way of Zoom. I'll take attendance. Ray Garino?
Here.
Paula Johnson?
Present.
Also here is Dan Donovan, our COO, and Greg Rodriguez, our Director of Technology. And Mrs. Oden, I chair the committee. So we'll start with the first item on the agenda, and that is the furniture at Nashua High School South.
Yes, if you recall, last month, we had a request for the furniture at North, which was approved by the committee and the full board. So this is the furniture at South. You might ask why they didn't happen on the same month, and that was just because all the quotes weren't received by South in time. But basically, each school, each high school, received $100,000 out of the 2.2 million in one-time funds that the schools received this year. And those monies were transferred a couple of months ago into their accounts. So now they're purchasing the chairs. They're also, if you notice, at South, they're purchasing 900 chairs and 240 desks. 700 of those chairs are classroom chairs, and 200 are for the cafeteria. And then there's 240 desks, which are obviously for the classroom. So basically, most of the same reasoning that the North needed these is that the high schools are about this, about 18 years old. The furniture that was purchased was probably not as heavy-duty as we probably should have purchased, so things have been breaking, and they need to replace it with new furniture.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Okay, so if our students were in school, they still would have been coming in at this point in time?
Yes. We probably would have requested them a little sooner if they were in the building, but this has been on our radar for the last couple of years. In the spring last year, we, I think, had about 20,000 that they used for furniture. So the high schools, being the significant size facilities that they are, you know, need to replace this every certain, so many years.
So our classrooms are all nice and clean, and floors are all waxed, and everything's all done for these, all these desks and chairs to go into them now?
Yes, they are.
So if, so the, if we were to decide that we were going to bring school back in another month, we'd be all ready to go? Everything would be up and ready and running to go to bring all the students back?
Yes.
With maintenance and everything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the purchase of 900 chairs and 240 desks from Verco for a total of $94,155 for Nashua High School South. Mr. Garino?
Oh, moved.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Okay, for the vote, Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Motion is approved unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our CTE computer equipment, and I believe that's why Mr. Rodriguez is here, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thanks for having me. So the CTE program is looking to upgrade their desktops, I should say, computer environment. Right now, what they have, I believe, is a Mac lab. The computers are, that are in that department are aging out. So talking with the folks at CTE, we decided to purchase HP Z2G4 model workstation. So these are quite powerful computers that do meet industry standards. So, you know, I7 processor, which is one of their top-of-the-line processors, enough RAM so they can multitask, and enough storage where they can hold quite a few programs, intensive programs on the computer. So, along with an Nvidia Quadro Pro graphics card. So we're going to move forward with IT Insiders because they provided the best price as opposed to GovConnection and RTM Communications, or I should say Connection, it's not GovConnection anymore, so I apologize for that. So we're going to purchase, move forward, if approved, for $27,980 for, I believe, I don't have the quantity on there, but...
20.
20, okay, 20.
And this is for the TV, Jeff Leoni's TV?
Correct.
Program within the CTE?
Yeah, this was specially purchased back in August, and this is in communication with Mike McWilkin, who's no longer with the district, and Jeff Leoni. So this is a collaborative effort between the three of us to figure out what would suit the CTE TV program best.
Do we know, when will this be delivered?
Well, when we have it ordered, usually takes about a month or so, depending on supply chain.
So then one to two months?
Yep.
And so we don't have anybody in CTE right now doing anything, or do we? I can't remember. We keep changing everything from day to day, month to month, week to week.
This was going to be purchased, I believe, anyways, so it was a matter of when they were going to do it. I just, I think now, since there's a new CTE director, there's a push because there was, you know, just catching, getting up to speed and, you know, past projects that, you know, just fall by the wayside. So finally, there's a catch-up, so I think now there's a push to purchase the desktops and get them ready. So we did some things over the summer to make it ready to put it on our network. That lab was not on our network before, but now it is. So accessing resources should be much easier than the problems that they had before. So it was one of the things that we did over the summer to help out.
And this money's in the budget, line item in the budget?
It's, Perkins Grant is, yeah.
Perkins Grant?
Yep.
Yes, and typically Perkins funding, there's been some changes due to the COVID pandemic, but typically Perkins requests that you purchase the items prior to the end of February so that they're in place at least part of the grant year, which typically runs from October to September.
Thank you.
Also, I believe CTE programs are back, two hours, one every other week. Does that sound familiar to anybody?
I know that there are some CTE students attending some of the programs, yes. I don't have a lot of detail on it, but I am aware that there, some students are being bused for those programs.
Okay, great, that's good news. Thank you. And the monitors are almost $2,600?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want that all in my motion?
Please.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion?
I think Mr. Garino has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garino.
Thank you, I just have a quick question. I was just wondering if anybody knows about the software needs? I know you said it's going to be used in the TV program, but has anybody approached you with any additional needs for software?
Yep, so one of the programs that we're working, we worked with is Avid. Avid is, is used by, I don't know, for Hollywood, but it is, it's used in Hollywood. It's John Favreau, who does a lot of editing with Avid. So Avid's one of the programs that Jeff and Mike, what we were talking about to put on these computers. So this is in conjunction with that. So once we get an idea of when the computers will be coming, we can work to spin up an Avid server to, so they can store the projects on them, so they'll be accessible on our network for the computers. So, and the speed shouldn't be an issue because since the summer, we did our upgrades. We now have 10 gigabits of speed running back just from the server, so it's a very short distance anyways, so there shouldn't be any issue with that.
So we already have the software, is that what you?
Not yet, but it, it's in process.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, we've already, we've already talked with them. It's already been, you know, we figured out ways to make it work in our network and in our systems, and it should be fine. So we don't see any, any roadblocks in the way of putting the certain, the right software in the computers. And these computers can handle it, too.
Yeah, yeah, they look pretty powerful.
Yeah, I'd like one, but hey.
I could, I could make that motion to approve the purchase of, of these computers.
20, HP 22G4 and 20 HP, well, I should say, workstations and 20 HP P24H monitors for a total of $30,778.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes. Motion passes unanimously. And I'd just like to add, we're lucky buying all this, all these computer products from a local vendor. I think that's, that's a real plus for us, so, thank you. And they always come in at one, the lowest price, it seems.
Yeah, we're fortunate to have good relationships in the district and locally. So that's one thing that we strive to do is, and now especially, is to have good local relationships.
And Donnie, for a minute, I thought you were going to say we were lucky to have Greg Rodriguez, Greg Rodriguez with us tonight, but I don't know if I agree or not, but he was here, and I thank him for coming.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. The pleasure's all mine.
Yes, we are lucky to have you here, and you're lucky to be leaving now.
Okay, have a great night.
You, too.
Thank you for having me. Take care.
Oh, yeah, thank you, bye-bye. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the NASIS, Request for Proposal for Salary Study. And NASIS is the...
The Association of Administrators, Supervisors and Administrators, I believe?
Nashua Association of School Administrators and Supervisors.
Yes. Okay, so this was, this is the union of most of the directors, and there's about 50 people in it. This was a group that became unionized about four or five years ago. They have a varied group of people with, with pay ranges running from about $40,000 up to, you know, people making over $100,000. The, the group has sort of struggled because of the many different, many different jobs that they have. It's hard to put them on a grid like you might teachers or parers or people that basically do the same type of job. So they, what they were looking for was a way to take a look at the group and say, okay, can we, can we put together a grid, let's say? Can we take a look at which people within this group are maybe making fair money, where some people may be well-underpaid, some people may be overpaid? So this is a study that was initially going to be done internally, but for the last couple of years, we just haven't had the time to do it. It takes a lot of work to do. We spoke with the city, who had another group that was a bit disparate like this, and they had reached out to an outside firm and, and got the work done externally. So basically, this group, during its last negotiation, as it says on the memo in, in section 5.1 of their current contract, that a good faith effort will be made to develop salary scales for all bands of members of this bargaining unit before December 31st, 2020. Now, obviously, they're not going to meet that deadline, but I think everyone's in agreement that if, if, if they can get this approved, they'll be at least working in the right direction towards getting this prepared. So as they go to negotiate further, they'll have a lot more information to help them with their negotiations for their members in the future. So there were two options. Two people responded to the RFP, and they would like to go with Municipal Resources. They're a local New Hampshire firm, and that's $7,500. The other firm was significantly more than that. And the funding for this will basically, if you recall, this group agreed to a lower percent than was in the budget. So I could cover it with that, or I could probably cover it with another contracted service line. Though it was not specifically budgeted, I think we can, I can find money and make a transfer to cover it.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm just concerned with all this at this point in time. I know that we, that we had a, this was the one that I think I was on the first negotiation. Yeah, I'm not going to support this at this point, point in time. And our taxes are going up in this city, and people are having a hard time, and yet I can't even think about people getting raises right now or anything. And even to spend money like this, $7,500, not a lot of money, but it's still $7,500. And the climate, that's what's going on. We haven't, the city wants to put a curfew on us now. That's going to make, put more hardships on people who have to work and businesses. So I just can't support this at this time, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Donovan, did you say that this company has already worked with the city?
Yes.
Municipal Resources?
Yes, I believe this is the company that, that did the last study for the city, yes. It's the same company.
Well, you know, we haven't been able to get it done, and certainly they deserve to have something to go by, and it needs to be fair and documented. So I will support this. I will support this to ensure that everything is, is fair for these people. I, I think, you know, maybe, maybe if you're not making a lot of money, but you see you're right in line with everybody in the state, you, you understand that that's the average salary or why somebody is at the top. So I will support this. Mr. Garino, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to support it also. It looks like it's in the contract that we should make a good faith effort. We should honor the contract. So I will move that we approve the $7,500 for, for the Municipal Resources to do the study.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, let's take a vote. Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Motion passes two to one. Okay, and the next one is the quarterly credit card report.
Yes, as you're, I'm sure you're familiar with now, each quarter, we update the spending on our credit cards. As you can see, it's not a, a lot of money, especially during these times. The most consistent item we spend on with credit cards is advertising because a number of the online advertisers require a credit card payment. Just a few highlights on this one. If you take a look on educational supplies, you see the 23724, there's a little 1 next to that. That is purchases we made related to the grant we received from the New England Patriots for over Led Street School. The monies had not come in, but we wanted to start preparing for a, for a ceremony and some other things. So we, we agreed we'd purchase it with the Led Street operating funds, and then when the grant funds come in, we'll, we'll turn around and replace that. I think that recently happened. And then the other item is the technology software line. You see there, the $14,000. And the $14,000 was, was for the QuickBooks software, and we purchased that with the, some of the excess funds we had in June of this, this last school year, fiscal year '20. As we've been putting that system in and upgrading the, the software, we found out that there's another way of doing it where we could use a different version of QuickBooks, which resulted in a savings of $9,928. So on that line item there, I don't think you can see the negative, but the reality is, in June, there was a cost of $14,148. August, there was a credit of $9,928, which results, and if you look in the far right, the total is $4,220. So that's the actual cost of this. When we were implementing the software, they had come out with some changes in the way to do it and with licenses. So we were able to work with them and, and get that significant savings. And I guess the only other item you'll see there in the month of September, it says security equipment, the 1,0081280. That was for some of the vestibules that we put in in each of our schools, the security vestibules, and to get the, I think it was either the bulletproof glass or the trays that go underneath, to get some of those in time so that we could actually get the work done and receive the 80% of the funding from the state, we had to order it via a credit card. So that's what that is.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Nope. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the credit card report as presented tonight?
I'll move it.
Mr. Garino?
I will second.
Okay. Mr. Garino, the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Passed unanimously. Okay. We're on to the fiscal year '20 invoices over $10,000, the annual report for that.
Okay, so back a few years ago, I believe in Mr. Dennis Ryder's day on the board, one of the policies was changed so that we would report back to the board annually on any invoices that were over $10,000 during the previous year. So basically, I've been doing this in December for the previous school year. To do it, I could maybe do it in November or so, but typically, we need to close all the books and make sure everything's completed before we do it, and that typically doesn't take place till September sometime. So basically, I get a report from the General Ledger, which lists, it's an Excel spreadsheet, it lists each of the individual invoices that are over $10,000. I combine them by vendor. So for example, the first item ever sourced, there was no invoice for $1,140,000. Those were a whole, a number of invoices added together to equal them $1,140,000. And so I put them together, I show them on this summary sheet that we'll be running through quickly tonight, and I sort of categorize them so you can get a, get a sense of, you know, what areas we're spending significant sums of money. Now, this includes all of our spending, the spending in the operating budget, grant spending. It also includes deferred maintenance spending. And at the bottom of the sheet, when we get there, you'll see it's, it's the JSSBC spending for the middle school project. So there's a number of different funding mechanisms all in this report, but it at least gets to all those invoices. So I'll just run through each of the categories. First one's pretty straightforward, utilities. That's where we, we get our utilities to run all our facilities. And we do purchase our electricity and our gas through an agreement that we, we and the city work together to get a fixed price for a period. It could be a year, it could be two years. We're constantly working with, with other vendors to help us get the best pricing on that, and then we lock in our rates. So that is included in, in that. The next section is transportation. First student is there, obviously, that's a contract we recently just signed, the latest one, for another five years. And the other two listed there are Carrying Hands in Durham. Those are for our out-of-district students at schools where we may only have one or two, maybe three students. It doesn't make sense to use a large yellow bus that would cost a lot more money. So there are these, these kind of firms that are out there. Those are the little, typically what you see, those are the, the white vans, those kind of, that, that support, and they'll send maybe, they'll fit maybe three to five students in those transportation. It is expensive, and there aren't lots of companies, there's not a lot of availability, so the transportation director will call those two firms, and I think there's one other one, and try to get the best price. Frequently, though, it's, only one firm has the option of getting that student from where they are to where they need to be every day. Okay, rentals, you see there Conway Arena, and then the Brady Sullivan Conway Arena is the ice hockey program. We pay rental to that arena through the athletics budget, and the Brady Sullivan is the Brentwood school rent out on our facility in, out off Amherst Street. And then the next group is the special education tuition. Now, you'll notice there that the first item is the Adult Learning Center, their special ed program, the Clearway School. That does get brought to the board each year and voted on. All these other items are schools where students go. That's decided based upon their IEP. It's a decision made between the special ed department here at the district and the parents. So it's not the kind of thing that the board has, has ever voted on, so that's why you'll see all the N's there, that they don't necessarily vote on this. And that's, if you look at the procedures, you'll notice this is an item that doesn't need to get voted on if there's an over $10,000 invoice. So any questions on that page?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Conway Ice, how do we negotiate with them for the amount that we're paying them?
Well, they give us a, they work with Lisa Gingras, the athletic director, and they'll, they'll give her a quote. I don't think there's lots of negotiating, though I do think Nashua teams pay a little bit less than other teams that come in from the outside.
Well, the reason I'm asking this, I think, if I remember correctly, I was on the board of Alderman when we signed the lease on our land, and they're leasing the land from up, I believe it's a buck a year, unless that's changed. And if that's still the same, I think we, as a community, should get a better rate than $25,986.67 that we're paying them when they're on our land, and they'd like another sheet of ice. If they could move the Public Works building, which who knows, it might happen, then they would get another sheet of ice that they've wanted, probably for a buck a year again versus fair market value of the taxpayers of Nashua. So I'd like to know if they're still paying us a buck a year to lease the land. I believe it was like a 99-year lease, and if that's the case, I think we should get a better price in negotiating for our students to be using Conway Ice. Thank you.
Okay. All right, flip over your page.
I'm sorry, I have one question. I see at the bottom, there's $11,000 to Portsmouth School District. Is that maybe a student that... Is that maybe a student that's been placed from Nashua into a family or a home in Portsmouth? Is that what that is?
That's typically what it is when you see another public school, it's a student, a Nashua student that for some reason was moved out of Nashua to another place.
But not the parents
No.
Desiring that, it's a, okay, a placement like, okay.
These are typically students that aren't with their parents, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the flip side of that, you'll see the next category is supply services, mostly plant operations. Now, some of these contracts are multi-year contracts, for example, the Control Technology and Siemens, they're the ones that work on some of our HVAC equipment at specific schools, so those have gone in front of the board, but a lot of times, they're three-year contracts, so it's not the kind of thing you're going to see every year. Same goes for that D and M striping, I believe that was a three-year contract when it was approved. The M and M Electrical Supply, that's when, this past spring, when we were put together the alternate care facility at the high school, that was, we spent 57,000 on electrical supplies so that we could have that up and running. We did receive a reimbursement from the state to cover that, so there was a cost, but we did get reimbursed for that. And then train is another one where they provide HVAC, but they also, I think we did, we did some work on either the HVAC system or the generator systems, so that's why that one's hired this year. That included both services and equipment this year. Okay, the next group, books and supplies, most of these items go through the curriculum committee. When an item is approved at the curriculum committee, which is typically any sort of curriculum or books or things like that, it makes a lot more sense for it to be discussed at the level where the curriculum people meet. So most of those items were approved there and then purchased through the regular process. There are just a few that are different from books, there is the Office Depot. When we purchased our Eureka Math, we didn't buy the textbooks, we used workbooks. So we go out and the 44,000 was producing a whole number of those workbooks, getting them printed up. So that's why it's a large amount of an Office Depot type. And you'll notice there's UPS. We, when you purchase books, they typically add a freight cost, and typically, they add a percent of what you pay for the books. Frequently, that's a fairly significant number, so some of the providers will allow us to go out and get our own shipping, so that's what we did, that's why the UPS. And I'm pretty sure it was the order, the second item listed there, the Heinemann Order, which was a significant number of books. So basically, we saved money doing it ourselves and billing it directly to UPS than going through Heinemann. And the other one that's a little different in there, it's not really a books and supplies, I probably should have moved it, but it's Tactical Medical Solution. Back about a year ago, we decided that we would have, we'd update all our AEDs and that equipment, and that we would have a emergency package, which included tourniquets and things like that at every school, and in some of the larger schools in multiple places. So I think actually, there's one in almost every classroom at this point, so that's what that 21,000 is. And then the last group there, just titled services, most of these are special education services or services for training or professional development. You'll notice a number of these, if you look at the description, were paid for by grants, and some of them were professional development training, let's say, where for one session, it might be 2,500, and then they did a number of sessions throughout the year. And sometimes with a grant, they'll decide to do a couple, and then later on, they'll add on to it. So there are, you know, some of the larger items there, the Adult Learning Center, that's the non, that's the typical student group that we pay for. Clark Associates and ABC, those are the occupational therapy and physical therapy services through special ed, and the specialized purchasing consultants, that is the copy contract and the usage, basically what we pay each click. We pay that on those twice a year. So any questions on that page? Okay, we'll move on to the third page. And actually, at the top of the third page is the Microsociety Charter School. What that is, is if you recall, we were, first, we hired a person to work at charter schools to help with the special education students, then we started the following year, that wasn't working out great, so we started bringing them to our schools, but the kids were on the buses too long, missing out on time at their own schools. So now, what we decided to do last year was, what SPED decided to do was, they would go out and hire and get the services done, and then it's our responsibility to pay that. So we effectively paid Microsociety for a number of students. Computer Supplies and Services, now this, it's a fairly large group, a lot of this stuff is the annual licenses for our various softwares. Now, the reality of this is, we don't bring every single year, each individual software contract forward because it's typically the same contract. What we do do during the budget process is, we give a list of all the softwares, what it is, what it does, and it's put into the budget. Then typically, most of the softwares have a year of, you know, July through June, they cover the school year, you pay for it in the beginning of the year in July, and they, sometimes they will go up, I mean, typically, that's how these companies make their money, so they rarely go down, but they usually go up. So all where it says IT review, those were all items that we're using every single year, various softwares. And then, other than that, there is in here also computer hardware, all computer equipment typically does get approved. Every May or June, we bring forward the quotes for purchases of items, we're going to be purchased during the year, we choose the vendor, we get a price, and then we purchase going forward. So that's what that is, and then the equipment is the last group on this page, and as you can see, it's varying things. Allied Universal is all our security cameras and maintenance agreements. There's cleaning equipment, there's the vehicles we purchased using the SURF fund at the city, we have some cash registers purchased through Food Service, there's a number of other tractors for our fields, musical instruments, et cetera. So those items, for the most part, were brought forward and discussed. So any questions on that page? Okay, and then the last page is the Conferences and Registration, that's for the CTE program as a, as a registration that they pay each year. Miscellaneous, there's Donors Choose, which we've been putting 50,000 in. Norway Savings Bank is the annual lease payment on the copiers, is purchase of food, and YMCA of Greater Nashua, that's our summer school program, the Power Scholars Program, so we basically, we used to run that ourselves, now the Y runs it, so they employ all the staff and run the program. And then there's deferred maintenance projects, these are all projects brought forward, there's roofing work, we resurfaced our tennis courts at North, and we replaced one of the large generators, I believe that was at North, but it was definitely one of the two high schools. And then the last item, for the most part, is work being done for the middle school project, and that is all approved at the JSSBC level, though they're paid through our process. The only item that is not related to the middle school is Hudson Paving, and that was for a bond that we got, a small bond that we got to do some paving at, I think, four or five different schools last year. So that is it on that report, any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay.
So next on the agenda is fiscal year 20 invoices over 10,000, the annual report for that.
Now, that's what we just did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't check it off, thank you. So now we have responses to questions. There were some questions pertaining to the actual number of students, and a lot of it had to do with the numbers in the schools.
Yes, so there was, it was, Ms. Johnson had a few questions, I think we answered a couple of them last time, and these were sort of outstanding, so I sort of put it together. She requested, you know, the actual number of students in each school broken down, so that's the October 1 report, which shows each grade, number of students by school. And I think that pretty much details that pretty well, that is the October 1 number that we use statewide for lots of different things. And so that, I think, answered that question. Nurses working in the schools, yes, unless for some reason they're out on one of the leaves that are available through the rules, the nurses are typically in the schools. Okay, the bus situation, as it says here, we've been using up to about 40 buses a week. Now, with the number of students that we're bringing to schools, special education students, kindergarten, and first grade, when those are in session, there's not lots of students on the buses, but the reality is, the students still need to get to the schools at certain times, and we don't want the bus, we don't want the students on the bus for a long, long time, so we're still, it's an inefficient way, but you're bringing so few students that that's, in fact, what is happening. So we are using about 40, the fleet is about 85 buses, I think it's actually 88 buses. And we did agree with the bus company, because initially, back in September, when we signed the contract, we were expecting that there would be certain students going back in October, without getting into all the details, that never happened. Now, hopefully, students will be going back in January, but we need to have the drivers and everybody ready to go. If we were to, especially since many schools in New Hampshire are going back, we would have probably lost many of our drivers if we didn't agree to the 80% rate that we agreed to. So that's basically keeping them, they're continuing to pay the drivers, the drivers are available, so whenever the decision is made to go back to school, we'll have drivers to do that. And then, what have the custodians been doing, there's an email there from Sean Smith, he talked to his custodial supervisors and went through. And to be honest with you, if you take a look, I've been in the last week and a half, I've been in Elm Street, I've been in Pennachuck, and I was at Dr. Crisp, and there's, the floors are probably the nicest I've ever seen, a lot of walls and doors, et cetera, have been painted, so they have, we have used that staff to do the type of work that we have a hard time getting to when we're, students are in full time. So the schools are looking a lot brighter than they have in the last few summers. So that was simply my attempt to respond to most of those questions.
May I make some comments, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we've got 48 buses that we're not using, and we're paying them 80% of the cost, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
So what is the cost of those 48 buses, that 80%?
There's a rate of about, it's about $400 a day, so 320 you're paying, let's say. I'd have to, I don't, that's not the exact number, but that's a ballpark number.
So it's about a rate of $400 a day?
That's what we're paying if we were using the buses.
Per bus or per just all?
Per bus per day.
Okay, 400 times 48 equals, so that's about $19,020? $200, $19,200?
You're getting a daily rate?
$400 a day, right, times 48 buses, that would be $19,200?
Yep.
Okay. Times how many days these buses haven't been running?
I don't know the exact number of days, I mean, I can get you the numbers that you're trying to get to and get your actual numbers, because we've been breaking it down, we've been getting invoices, here's the buses we're using, which are billed at the full rate, and here's the buses we're not using, which are billed at the 80% rate. So I do have total numbers on those, I don't have them in front of me, but I can get them.
I'd like to see them, I think everybody out there would like to see them also. I understand what we're doing, but I can't understand when my taxes and everybody else's taxes are going up 3.9%, the people are having a hard time out there. It's questionable, I know I got calls, and I, today, I got a call from somebody else, and I was unable to take the call, and I would, you know, I have to call them back. Okay, so we're cleaning everything in the schools, so it's going to look beautiful when our students eventually get back into school, which I'm hoping is sooner versus later, but I'm not going to hold my breath on that one either. Let's see, also, that's from Sean Smith, I'm sure I'll have more questions, I started sanitizing foggers and all this that I'm reading. So we've got foggers in the building right now, we're fogging the buildings to sanitize it from whoever's in the buildings, do we have teachers in the buildings at all?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have teachers, so we're fogging the building and sanitizing everything after, I guess?
Yes, each night, they go through with the foggers, and they, now, if there's a wing of a high school, let's say, that's not being used, they probably wouldn't do that, but any part of the building that's being used by staff is being fogged each night.
We never did this when the flu came.
And we would expect to see in a typical environment, which obviously makes sense, we need fewer subs with a remote learning model. The next item that I'll, is additional hours, you can see that the numbers were much higher in July, August, September, that was because of summer school, now that's kind of dropped off. Typically, that's an account, summer school in the summer, and then there's committees and groups that get together, some of that funding is in grants, and some of it shows up here, but those numbers will be lower going forward until probably the spring. The stipends number had a spike this month, 22,000 of that 30,000 amount was the middle school fall coach payment, and you'll see in December, the South and North High School payments. Okay, the retirement and separation pay, as you can see, it's 8,000 over what we budgeted, but the good news is that all the teachers, from what I can see, there's a possibility of one teacher, where it looks a little different, I'll verify that, but all the teachers that put their name on the list to retire have now received their payments. So of the payments, 625,000 of that A08 is for teachers, and 140,000 is for four administrators, three principals, and the CTE director. So that, if you take that, that amount, that equals a little over 30,000 per person at the administrator level, that's not typically budgeted early enough because we don't know, so what I do is I budget the number based on the teachers, and then I add an amount to it. So the reality is this this account will continue to go because if people leave, let's say a secretary or a parent or somebody might, anybody that leaves during the year that has accrued vacation time, then that gets charged to this account. So it will go up, but there won't be any more large payments that I'm aware of. That can always change occasionally based on situations, but. So we've pretty much spent most of that, those funds. Okay, fringe benefits, like we say, that's from the city, so not much to say about that. And professional and technical services, those are are going fine according to budget. There's nothing that really is outstanding there. It's pupil support is the O T P T. Contract services are mostly items coming from the I T or the plan ops department. Any questions on that page? Okay, page two. Property services. So I ran a compared electricity, heating, gas and water. Where we were five months in last year to where we are this year. Last year, the electricity was eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. This year, we're down to five, five hundred and fifty-two, so that's a three hundred thousand, three hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction. As we mentioned last month, when we paid off a lot of those smart starts, we paid those off in June, so now we're starting to see the savings in that account. Heating, gas, last year at this point, we were at sixty-one thousand, we're at fifty-two thousand, so that's pretty close. And water, last year at this point, we're at fifty-five and we're at fifty-two, so those are sort of right in line where they were last year. And then there's a number of maintenance contracts there. A lot of those are amounts that are agreed upon in specific contracts we already have in place. So they're they're being paid per schedule. And the rentals line, like I said, most of that is is the Brentwood. We sort of committed it in July, but it's only, it's getting paid monthly. It's not getting paid in advance. And then other services, a lot of these are smaller accounts. I did actually check the telephone compared to where we were last year. We were at fifty-five last year. We're at fifty-four this year, so it's in the same area. Most of these other accounts, there are some that, i.e. travel and mileage reimbursements are lower. They'll probably be below budget for the year. They're not big accounts budgeted in the first place, but they should be below. Advertising, postage and delivery, they're sort of running where they were last year. And then you get to the bottom of that. You'll see the regular transportation services. I'll have a more detailed review of that in the special education transportation services next month. Trying to explain sort of what we expected to pay if school was in full session versus what we're paying now. So I'll give you a separate review on that, but next month. And flip the page over. You see the same for sped trans- transportation. And then tuition out of district, that's the account that's always typically running over budget. It's sort of near where we were last year at this point, so that we'll be getting more more detailed information and a better sense of where we're gonna end up with that over the next month or so. The next one, supplies and materials. This is, as it says, it's no large, large accounts here. They're either accounts managed by the schools or they're accounts, for the most part, managed by Mr. Smith. And then the bottom of that category is the books and subscriptions and things that are either managed by librarians and or the curriculum department. So nothing really crazy there. You will notice on the computer supplies line, six one eight oh seven, there's a negative there. We, the supplies that we purchased to fix some of the Chromebooks were charging to the grant that we got from the state, from the federal government. So that's why it's a negative this month that had been building up and where we credited it. We made the entry this month.
So, go ahead. So that means that the taxpayers are not paying when someone breaks the Chromebook? Or taxpayers of Nashua are not paying? It's actually coming from a grant from the federal government?
Yes.
Okay.
For, now, if we go to a one-to-one, this grant is only good through December thirtieth and there is a CARES Act which pays next year, but after this school year, assuming things go back to normal next year.
Right.
Those funds won't be there.
But I just wanted to make sure that people know that it's not the Nashua taxpayer homeowners that are that are paying when our Chromebooks break. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I just jump in here and say something here? All our taxes, when you pay it, goes into this big slush fund at the federal government level. So you know what? It's pay me now, pay me later. So it's gonna come from somewhere. So it can be from us taxpayers here in Nashua. It doesn't go into a separate pot that says Nashua taxpayers only. The grant goes, the money goes to the federal government. It comes back to us. And you know what? A taxpayer has paid for it. So whether it's directly from us or it's from the federal government, somebody had to pay for it, and I'm sure it's not Congress. Thank you.
Right. We're all taxpayers. All of us are taxpayers.
Okay, let's move on, please. Thank you.
Okay, other expenses, the indirect costs, that's the work, the revenue we get back on grants, and that should be fine for the year. And then at the bottom of that page, in the beginning of the next, is the equipment and the computer equipment, the software. Those are are fine. We do spend most of our money on software and hardware for computers at the beginning of the year, which we did this year also, you'll see. Excuse me, the debt service capital lease. Now, the ninety-one thousand is the annual payment. The two hundred and forty-nine thousand is the down payment on the new lease that we just signed, the six-year lease that we just signed. So that's the down payment amount. Going forward, you'll just see an amount each year for, I I believe it's about ninety-five thousand with the new lease, but that's that's what you'll see. That two hundred and fifty thousand came from the one-time funds also. So basically, at at the bottom of it, it says that total budget spent thus far, thirty-three point nine seven percent. If you say you're five twelfths through the calendar year, that's forty-one percent. If you're three tenths through the school year, that's thirty percent. So thirty-three nine seven is in between those two numbers, gives you a sense that everything is fine in in a in a very broad way. So that's a quick review of the financial report through November. Any questions?
Okay, so now we're on to the November transfer report.
Yes, and we simply have two transfers this month. The first one is a transfer done by C T E from Supplies into the Books Account, SendGage. It's a SendGage invoice. That's a, they're a book company. So they're moving it from their Supplies to their Books, so it'll be more accurate. And the second one is Ledgestreet Elementary. And what we did there was the New England Patriots Grant. We received the grant. We signed the paperwork, but the check had yet to be received and they wanted to start doing some of the spending. So we agreed that we would use our, the operating budget at Ledgestreet, and then when the check came in, we would reimburse that. That check did come in, I think. It was probably a week or two after we, they did this transfer so they could make some purchases. So that will be all cleared up, but they did the transfer so that they could do the purchases and they didn't have to wait for the check to come in and clear. And that is it for transfers.
Anybody have any questions at this point? Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I I just can't support charging our students extra for Chromebooks. And I'll tell you why. We, we have all kinds of fees for everything, for 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 parking, for students to park, for students to take the bus. This is just one more fee. And I feel like we're nickel-and-diming families to death. This Chromebook situation is only a temporary situation. And I understand that, you know, it it does give an incentive for students not to to be to be more careful with with school property. But we give out textbooks all the time. Textbooks are expensive. And, you know, kids wreck textbooks too, you know? But I I just can't, I just can't support charging our students and our families upfront for Chromebook use. After the fact, if they ruin them, they should be responsible, absolutely. But I I'm just not going to support another fee on top of other fees that we already have. And I think the burdens on the family is just too much. So I know it's going to policy, but, you know, we'll we'll discuss it more on policy. But I just wanted people to understand where I stood on that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino.
I'd like to say something. Now, I don't have a problem with normal wear and tear, but when I hear that they came back, these Chromebooks keyboards were ripped out or animal urine is on it, you know, that's not normal wear and tear on a Chromebook. And that's, that lies with the parents. I get it. But sometimes it has to hit the pocketbook for the parents to understand that this is not their property. It belongs to the city of Nashua, the Nashua School District. And you know what? I would pay for my kids if I had a policy because it just ensured if something happened, you get it fixed. And some of the things, normal wear and tear, I don't have a problem with, but some of the conditions that thinks these Chromebooks came back, I'm sorry. It was wrong and people have to be responsible. And the insurance makes it responsible, unless there's clauses in there for animal urine. Thank you.
Well, I I don't, I don't agree that that people should be responsible, but to hit every, to hit everybody up ahead, I I think it's just too much for families. We're already, families are already stretched and you're punishing people who are being responsible, but.
It's optional. It's optional. They don't have to buy it if they don't want to. It's optional.
One person at a time, please. Thank you.
It it's optional. I thought I thought they, okay, if it's optional, it's a different story, but I thought I thought it was not optional. But if it's insurance and it's optional ahead of time and it's available, then then fine. But I I thought that it was a fee that we were gonna charge on top of other fees, so I misunderstood. But I'm I'm sorry, I've already talked too much on this. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything else. We'll discuss it more in in at the other in the other committee. Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the time. Do you need a motion to approve the transfer report? Hello?
She's muted. I
Oh, okay.
I don't know if she knows that or not.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I I thought I was unmuted out. I was muted. Mr. Guarino, could you please make that motion?
Sure, I move to approve the transfer report for November twenty twenty.
I'm moved.
Okay, take a vote. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Motion passed unanimously, and thank you, Mr. Guarino. I had a question, Mr. Donovan, and I'm not sure this is a place to ask it, but we've all seen the six million dollars we could lose because the number of applications for free and reduced lunch has gone down. Do you know, are we taking any steps to correct that problem?
Good question. The six million is really a three-piece. That's the total number. For one and a half million of that decrease was due to, we received from the state in the adequacy funding an extra one and a half million dollars, knowing this year that it was just a one-time thing. So even though the difference in the, this is the adequacy aid that we're talking about, which is the money that we get from the state. A million and a half, we would fully expect to be lower than this year because we didn't expect to see that again. Now, the legislature could change it and add it back, but it was pretty clear to us that that was a one-time. So the delta truly is four and a half billion. And that's basically made up of of two pieces. One is the fewer number of students that we have. And that equals a difference of about one point seven million. And the other, the other is what you mentioned before, Mrs. Oden, is the free and reduced. So that's a difference of about two point six billion. Now, one of the things about the free and reduced, we've tried lots of ways to get people, but when we're giving the federal government and the food program, there's free lunch for everybody. So there's no, in in the regular world, if you didn't fill out your form by the beginning of October, we'd stop giving you free lunch and therefore you'd have to go fill the form out. We also didn't charge students for busing or parking. They would get it, well, parking they wouldn't, but busing they'd get free if they did their free and reduced lunch, but we didn't charge anybody. So they didn't come forward for that. For the sports, we didn't charge anything for the sports fees. Another way we try to get the free and reduced lunch people to fill out the applications. So there's no impetus for them to do it. We've tried hard through communicating, through standard communications. We've worked at the United Way to try to get the word out there. But, you know, it's COVID. People aren't out and about. They're not coming to the schools. I'm hoping that, keep in mind that this, this is an estimate for next year. So if we can get students and parents to sign up, we can get, we won't actually lose this money if we can get them to fill the forms out. So let's say, I'm just gonna throw this out there and let's say April first, everybody was back in school full time. Then maybe we'd have a much better chance if we reverted back. Now, the food program is not gonna revert back till the end of the school year. So you're not gonna get students to fill out the form, but if you have them in the building, I think you get a lot better chance of getting them. And I don't wanna get in the middle of whether, you know, students should be back full time, this or that. That's a decision for another group. You're, you guys are involved, but that's kind of, it's it's a calamity. It's a whole set of information. So we've tried, but it's it's really hard. You know, someone suggested you go knock on their doors. I don't think that's the way to do it.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a suggestion. We could knock on their doors electronically and if we could send emails out to those families that we know have have had it in the past, maybe they could, maybe they could do it electronically.
Yeah, I think there's, we gotta be a little bit careful about, there's a lot of confidentiality around it. Simply because you run it last year, wouldn't necessarily, I mean, be on it this year. We did talk about that a little bit, but a lot of, a lot of people simply aren't responding. Yeah, because we we have fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventy-two less families signed up than we did last year. That's a big number.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you have, if you have ideas, whatever, I'm I'm hoping that we can get these numbers back up. The reality, though, is many districts in the state are having the same problem. So we, there is a a group, I I believe it's being led by Manchester, putting together a letter to the state legislature or the governor. I'm not a hundred percent sure who it's being sent to, but it'll be sent off soon, talking about this problem specifically. With the having fewer students, we have three hundred and seventy-one less pre-K and kindergarten kids this year than we did last year. And why is that? Part of it's the PlayPal program. It's not running, so those students aren't in. And I would suggest a lot of parents said, I'm not gonna send my kid to kindergarten in a COVID time, so I'll just wait and send him to first grade. So we're hoping some of those numbers will pop back up next year, assuming things are back to normal come September for. So we're hoping some of those numbers will pop back up next year, assuming things are back to normal come September for return to school. So, but if we, if, if, if they can use the numbers, you know, last year's numbers, or they can give us more time and use a more, a more updated number. So there is some, there is a letter being sent up to Concord letting them know of the difficulties that we're having as a group of school districts.
I'm sorry, and we've signed on to that, that letter going up to the
Well, they called me, I spoke to them, so I think it's just sort of being sent. I don't think there's a whole bunch of signatures on it. I think it, they just called and asked some details about Nashua, specifically, I think mainly because of the size of our, our district. But it's being prepared by a, a group in Manchester.
Okay, and I can understand why that's a, a large school district that probably has been impacted the way we have.
Yes, they have.
I, I have one more question. We, we were gifted, I forgot the name of the company, 250 thermometers or the handheld thermometers where you could take people's temperatures. And I know a lot went out to sports teams. Can you tell me where, where they are dispersed?
Yes, they were given to athletics, and each school received a, a number of them.
Okay. Do you know if, if they're being, I, I, look, we don't have many students going into our elementary schools. You know, there's, there's a small number in kindergarten, first grade, or when we get back to hybrid. And I'm just wondering why their temperatures aren't taken if we have something like that. I know they said parents should take it at home. A lot of parents don't have that type of thermometer, and if you have to use a regular one, I don't know how many people have that. But that, that's under their tongue for so long. That's time-consuming, and I'm just wondering why these thermometers that we were gifted aren't being used to take the temperature of those, that small number of students that are coming into our elementary schools.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know the answer to that. I don't know if they're using them, or if not, why not? I don't know that.
Okay, okay, well. Not, not our committee, but we did get them, and I, I just wanna make sure they're being used, because I think taking the temperature, you know, all we talk about is safety, 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 and we don't want kids with fever in school. So. Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Rodriguez was here, and Ms. Bernardo, thank you for hosting us and taking, taking care of everything, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. The meeting is adjourned. It is 7:22.